Has stepped out for Dawn. Did Beth step out? Did I see her disappear? Okay, so Beth has stepped out at, but we are back in public online, live and in person at 6:50 PM. And at this point, I need to appoint a process observer. Anyone? Anyone? How about Liz? Would you like to be the process observer tonight?
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so. Okay, so now I need nomination. We did agenda adjustments, so I need nominations, resignations, and correspondence. Mr. Corey, that is you.
Yes, I have a couple resignation and resignations and one retirement to go through, so I'll take them one at a time. This one is from the middle school. Dear Mr. Gazone.
Resignation.
Please accept this letter as formal resignation from my position as Spanish teacher. My last day will be June 30th, 2021. Being a teacher at Hollis Brookline Middle School has been a great privilege as well as an invaluable learning experience. I am grateful for the opportunity. I wish you all the best. And that's from Mariel Camillo.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept the resignation of Mario Camillo. With an effective, yeah, that's good. That's good. Beth seconded. Kate. All those in favor? Okay, Beth.
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Liz, aye.
Krista?
Krista, aye.
Okay.
Krista, aye.
Should we move the phone closer to you and Amy?
I think that might be helpful. Do you mind, Kate?
I know, please.
The second one is a letter resignation from the high school. To whom it may concern, please consider this my resignation from teaching at Hollis Brookline High School effective at the close of the 2021 school year. Thank you, David Gilbert.
And what did he teach? Did you see?
He's a math teacher.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept the resignation of David Gilbert from Hollis Brookline High School. Gilbert, sorry. That's Beth. And seconded by Kate. So Beth and Kate. Beth, go ahead.
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Liz, aye.
Krista?
Krista, aye.
Thank you.
The next one is also from the high school. Dear Mr. Barnes, I would like to resign from my position as a school counselor at Hollis Brookline High School for the 21 school year. I am grateful, I greatly appreciate this opportunity and the value experiences at this early stage of my career. And that's from Melissa Gilmette, again, school counselor at the high school.
Okay, and that. So I need a motion to accept the resignation of Melissa Gilmette. I think that's Beth. And seconded by Kate. All in favor, Beth?
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Liz, aye.
Krista, aye.
This one is also at the middle school. Mr. Gazone, I would like to notify you of my resignation from Hollis Brookline Middle School officially on June 30th, 2021. Thank you for the opportunities and support the school has given me. With gratitude, Sierra Hogan Yorel.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept the resignation of Sierra Hogan Yorel. And that was moved by Beth, seconded by Kate and Beth. Vote. Thank you.
Kate, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Liz, aye.
What was the position?
Krista, what was the position there?
Eighth grade science.
Eighth grade science.
And the next one is actually a letter of retirement. To Tim Gazone, I am writing this letter to inform you of my retirement at the end of the 2021 school year. Please let me know if there's anything I can do to help prepare for my successor. And that came from Sheila Mandigoras. And I would just like to thank Sheila for her dedicated service. As we know, this year of COVID has been very difficult, and she has been truly outstanding. And I have enjoyed my time personally working with her in the last number of years at the SAU.
Great. So I need a motion to accept the resignation of Sheila Mandigoras.
It's a retirement.
Retirement, sorry. To accept. Is it the same motion though, right?
Yep.
To accept the letter of intent to retire? Is that the motion?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the letter of intent to retire received from Sheila Mandigoras. Moved by Beth.
Second.
Seconded by Kate. And I just comment that, you know, this has been a crazy year, and we appreciate all of her efforts and all of her time. But not just her time this year, but all of her time for many years. And so I do need to vote on this, so I will start with Beth.
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Liz, aye.
Krista?
Krista, aye.
That's it for nominations and resignations and retirements. I do have one piece of correspondence to alert the board to. I have gotten a few emails and phone calls and a couple of personal conversations just around face shields, masks, and athletics. And I understand the concerns that parents are presenting. Our athletic department has done an outstanding job of implementing the guidelines issued by the NHIAA. Those guidelines talk about masks both indoors and outdoors at this time. We do expect some potential changes coming regarding masks. But at this time, they are required for the state tournaments. And in a lot of ways, the athletic department, along with myself, feel it's best to practice in those conditions than to simply all of a sudden show up and play your first game in the tournament. The other piece that is an NHIAA guideline right now, if my school was playing Gina's school, and my school didn't have masks, but Gina's schools did, the requirement is that both teams wear masks. So it's an ongoing discussion with state superintendents, with the athletic department at the state. And we hope to see if there are new guidelines forthcoming. But right now, we're really following those guidelines. We are also looking, as most of the board members know, at a slight uptick in our COVID cases. Those cases have been related to specific instances that occurred outside of school. But coming inside of school and on athletics, probably the biggest protection we have to limit those continued spread is the mask. So we think it goes well, and we kind of predicted that there would be an uptick after Easter. And we are seeing that. We hope to see that start to go down over the coming days. But we also anticipate an uptick when we return from April vacation. So it's just going to be a couple tough weeks, and I thank all the parents for their support and their dedication as we move forward with the contact tracing and all the things that have been going on. And I'd take any questions if there are any about that topic.
I think we're good. Thank you for all of that. Are we sure we're good? Andy, you want to check? All right. Should I move on?
Yep.
You all set? Okay. All right. At this point, we're going to move on to approving the minutes. Sorry, my watch is not showing the time. Okay. All right, so both Liz and Cindy were absent on March 17th, 2021. So I need a motion to accept as amended. And the amendments would be, I'm going to take this mask off and just read it. Page five, line 16, replace direction with direct. Page seven, line 10, replace questioned with questions. Page 13, line nine, replace different with difference. And page 14, line 16, replace languages with language. So we need a motion to accept as amended. That's by Beth. I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Kate. And I'm going to need a roll call vote. Beth?
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye. Krista?
Krista, aye, sorry.
Okay. And then abstentions are from Cindy and Liz. And then I also need a motion to accept the minutes, the non-public minutes of March 17th, 2021.
So moved.
Moved by Kate. I need a second. By Beth. And again, it sounds like we had Cindy present, but Liz not present, sorry. So, okay, so I need a roll call vote, sorry.
Kate, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Cindy, aye.
And Krista?
Krista, aye.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. So at this point, we will move to public input. Let's just wait. Wait for, okay. Seeing none. Let me just make sure it's, okay, we're kind of a little ahead of schedule. So we're going to move on. If someone comes in, I beg of you all to allow us to invite them to public input if they come in at 7:15. I think that's only fair. I just think it's only fair, and I just want the public to know that if, we're going to move on, but.
They all had a lot of opportunity to talk on Saturday.
Well, we'll move on.
You ever sit in the chair and quarter past, say something?
You want me to?
Do you want me to?
Yes, that would be helpful. At 7:15, if someone walks in, we will accept their public input, but we will move on with our agenda. So.
Should we table this?
I think we should postpone it indefinitely. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to turn it over. No, no. I'm going to turn this over. We're going to waste 15 minutes. That's what we're going to do.
Right. Please put not.
Move it on. So principals and athletics reports, you two can duke it out as to who wants to go first.
I'll go first.
Okay, Jim.
At the speed of FedEx, please.
What's that?
At the speed of FedEx, Michael, please.
All right, so a couple highlights here in the last month. We, for the first time in over a year, had our entire band come together. It was a very nice moment. They sounded perfectly imperfect. It was, it was, it was an awesome day, hearing the sound of the eighth grade band echo down the hallways, reminiscent of some sense of normalcy. So there are plans for the seventh grade to do the same. I just spoke with Liz Noll today, and we're hoping to do that, that same thing, offer that for our seventh grade classes as well. We have a virtual play similar to the format that Matt Barbosa did up at the high school. Nancy Spencer is offering, well, she offered drama club this year. We had, I believe it was 10 or 12 students who were cast in this virtual play. There's a, there's an explanation there of what it's about. It's about the world that we live in right now with all of, all of the advances in technology and the challenges that those present. And I'm really looking forward to seeing that. The trailer is up right now, and it looks like it's going to be a real entertaining show. And at the end of the day, it was, it was keeping kids who are interested in the performing arts engaged in a really challenging year. So tipping my cap to Nancy for offering that through, through a lot of different obstacles and challenges. So that was, that was awesome. Highlight here, Ava Imbrogno, similar to last year, HBMS is very proud to say that our local chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution essay contest winner advanced to the state level where she won first place. So just like last year, HBMS is well represented at the state level in various, in various areas, including essay writing. So congratulations to Ava. And just a couple highlights, because some things coming up on the horizon. Tomorrow night, we're offering a parent information night via Zoom for our sixth grade parents. Patrick will be part of that, so the parents will get to meet him tomorrow night. That'll be exciting. We have our SAS testing for eighth graders next week, and our seventh graders will be after vacation. And we also are starting spring sports after we return from April break. So lots of exciting stuff on the horizon in the spring. Busy, busy, busy. But again, you know, very happy and proud to be able to offer all these things for the, for our students in this crazy year, so.
Yeah.
And I'm welcome. Any questions or comments?
Great. Anyone? Questions?
Middle school sports, are they all intramural?
So I believe the plan, and I don't want to overstep my bounds here, is to remain intramural. I have heard conversations about that.
That's, that's, so my question is, in that context, do we maintain the same mask requirements for sports where it's all internal?
We have, because the masks weren't designed by internal external. It was designed by safety and just spread in our own.
I was just curious. I just didn't know what we do.
I, first of all, want to congratulate Ava. That's incredible. First place is in writing an essay, and all of that is awesome. And I also agree with you. I want to congratulate not just Mrs. Spencer, but the entire performing arts team in both buildings. And the reason I'm bringing this up now, even though this is on your middle school thing, is that three members of our board had participants in the show, The Theory of Relativity. And so they can't say how great it was because they're really proud parents, and they can say whatever they want. But I just wanted to say that I watched it and enjoyed it and was very, very impressed by it. So I'm looking forward to watching the middle school. So that's how I'm branching. I don't want to take away from middle school at all, but I want to make sure that I get that out before I forget, so. But the whole team, and it's really hard, and I have some nieces in Pennsylvania who have not had any experience like this at much bigger high schools, and they are not getting this. So the fact that we're doing this is very, very incredible in all, both schools, so. Thank you. Jim, sorry. See, now I'm even calling you, Rick.
It's all good. I can walk right out.
Uniform.
I know. Okay, no, thank you so much. That's great. Now, now it's up to you, Rick.
Yep, I'll just go, I'll start with Brian's HB Athletics update. Obviously, spring is here. The weather's changed, at least until Friday. And we'll see how that goes, but we're coming off a very successful winter season and kicked off kind of a little bit of an opening, not really the true opening, but for, I believe that was one of our first games under the lights with lacrosse, which was a win, which was nice. And we also have girls lacrosse, obviously, and all our other spring sports. Baseball is playing today. And as well as Unified Track will begin, what's already, has already, has already started practicing. So we're excited to see that and build upon the kind of success that we've had. Did you want to cover HBMS Athletics, or?
We're starting up after spring break, so that's, that's kind of the news.
And we're happy to have our assistant coach, Justin Baloo. He's, will join us as a track assistant coach. And you see, we have a number of openings at both schools as well. Are you having any difficulty?
Yeah, Rick, I'm having a very hard time hearing.
Let me, let me, can I?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
Might make it easier.
I know Krista, there's no way Krista can hear you.
Okay.
I cannot hear a word.
I will speak loudly. Is that better, Krista?
I can see you on the screen.
Okay.
I can almost read your lips under your mouth.
Maybe this will help, I hope. So I was going to move through my board report. Obviously, you have that. You've read that and looked through it. I was going to start with the update to the program of studies, which I included in the packet. I included two pages in there. The first page is, there's nothing new. I was just trying to give you a sense of how it flowed, would flow if you were looking in the program of studies and flipping the pages. So that first page is exactly what you approved. That's nothing new. The second page, the underlying portion is brand new. That was the part we removed, where we talked about ranking and top 10, and we replaced that with Latin honors. And so the Latin honors piece with the summa cum laude, magna, and cum laude, those were what was approved at the school board, and we wanted to make sure that was listed in the program of studies. And now that since it's been approved, the rest of the language was taken directly from the old version of the class rank policy because that was the only place where we described the limits in terms of credits and what was transferable and what was not, and how it would all be calculated in there. So the only line that was changed in there was Latin honors at the very beginning of the first sentence. Will be, also be designated on the final transcript. That used to say top 10 would also be designated on the final transcript. So the rest is just from the old policy because that was the only place that was in there. And that's a very important piece of calculating GPA and whatnot, which is something that's going to, obviously, is ongoing as it pertains to waiting. So that's where it sits now. And I'm happy to take questions on that, if we want to go through this one at a time, or if you want to go just run through it.
I think you should probably just stop here. Are there any questions on this?
I, is there a student handbook also where this is, or is this, is this the only places going?
It's only going in the program of studies, right?
Correct. Anything, we've kind of kept the two separate in the past. So the student handbook has been more rules and those types of things.
I just wasn't sure what it's, it was unclear to me where its designated home was.
The program of studies is the designated home.
Yep. Are you aware of the bill going through state legislature about, I can't tell if it's changes or additions to the requirements for accepting credits for transfers, transfers in? Basically saying that you have to give credit for any class that comes from a New Hampshire accredited school. The only question I have is, is it changing anything for us? Are we going to have to look at policy if that goes through?
So my understanding is that we have to accept the credit, which we do. The question is, how do the courses count for our specific requirements? And that's the part that we have some flexibility. In addition to that, what courses count toward a GPA? Also, that's where we have some flexibility. But this right here in the program of studies is where you would find that information. And the thought was, that document gets reviewed every year by the board, so if we had to look at any of that, it would, we, we have an annual review cycle of it, so it would be a good location.
But I'm just wondering if the, if the, if the current wording that's going through, do we know if that's going to create a conflict for us with anything?
Not yet, right.
Not at this time.
Okay, cool.
When we see the final language, it may, it may not.
Right, but what's been proposed so, so far, it does not.
That's correct.
Good, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Rick. I think we're good.
So moving on to just an update, I gave an overview of the administrative restructuring, just to report out on that, which has been in existence now for three, almost three, full three years. In terms of, this is college career planning, mental health awareness, and increased outreach to students as areas of where we feel we've made some significant strides. In terms of college and career, we have, there's a senior, the, you know, our new, relatively young, our new guidance department in terms of years with the district, produced a senior college step-by-step video, which they posted on the website. They took full advantage of the restructuring of the website, which has been a really amazing, an amazing tool to showcase the school and adding pieces that are relative or related to school counseling. We're also doing some outreach. The Portsmouth Shipyard has offered to come out and host kind of a career showcase of offerings for students. And, and they're doing it just for our school. And, and so that's a way to showcase students what kind of careers are available to, in, in that area, which is a pretty important labor hub in New Hampshire. Things like welding and as they, a lot of different ship-based, shipbuilding-based kind of careers. And we're excited for that. We haven't determined the location yet, but that's something that we're pretty excited about. Probably, I think we're looking at May 25th, around that timeframe, to have those folks out. They've completely overhauled a bunch of processes within the, in the department at the direction, you know, at Lauren's lead, but under the direction of Chantel Clardy, our department head, completely overhauling the college letters of recommendation based on research they had done through the college admissions process. There, we had some CTE despite the pandemic. We know that it's been a struggle for students who are still in those programs to attend, but we want to continue to make, build awareness around the offerings. So we had the, those various schools zoom in, three of the reps zoom into, into the counseling department so we could gain more information for students. And as I mentioned, the overhaul website, which has been fantastic, they've updated their portion. They've added a mental health toolkit, which is pretty standard in most schools, and that's something they've put onto ours, a community resources page and a military section as well on the website as we continue to see more and more students opt for either ROTC, the military, or some of the service academies. And they're also doing a new presentation for the, involving early college planning, which will be coming up on April 21st. In terms of prevention, under kind of the mental health heading, Chantel, our, the department has created a program, her and Lauren have been working on it, where they're calling it Wellness Ambassadors, where they're bringing in students to do, it's almost kind of like an advisory light program where students can be points of contact for their peers. It'll certainly involve training in terms of making sure we have the right students in there and students that really want to do this, but a way to kind of do that outreach. We know kids are going to want to talk to kids more than they want to talk to adults, and this would be kind of just another link, a step in between the process for students to take kind of an active role in taking care of their fellow student under obviously careful adult supervision. If you remember, in the fall, we had Officer Bergeron, along with the school counseling department, had the kind of the anti-drug or anti-drinking and driving presentation in form of the wrecked car outside, which was, you know, just kind of a visual reminder of the dangers of alcohol and drugs. We've had our building level social emotional learning committee that's kind of a subcommittee from the district level. One, and they've made, done a lot of great work. They're actually doing some focus groups with students around school culture currently, and that's going to be kicking off soon. The bullying workshops, in terms of, which is mostly a policy review for students and making them aware. And that would make sure we're in compliance with the law. The school counseling department's built on what has been mostly administrative presentations. They've been building on that by sending counselors into the rooms to have a conversation about that. They also highlight professional days like School Counselor Week, more just to build awareness that school counselors can be reached. And the other piece that we're excited about that came is, the SAU brought into the school district was, was the NAMI Train the Trainer program to train on suicide prevention and awareness, which is great to have someone, as in this case, our department had trained. Visibility has been increased in terms of, from my vantage point, through the reactivation of the Twitter account, Naviance Outreach, et cetera. We have more counselors and revamped presentations. In terms of what we're doing for individual students, we have a list that we have for, that we review regularly for students who are at danger of failing, not graduating. And to Vice Chair Solan's point about the lower ratios, there has been a noticeable difference to make outreach with students. I've noticed it in terms of times of crisis, which we've certainly had. So we've had more counselors involved with that on weekends and whatnot, which was normally administrative chore. We also have our transfer mentor group, which is a huge success the last couple of years, and we've been getting good feedback on that from students. And just in terms of, to put it in people's awareness, there's the yearly timeline meeting for students. They try to get to seniors in September, November for freshmen, and November and January for juniors. Excuse me, junior February and April, freshman in November and January. And last year, 2019, 2020, we were pleased to have a 0% dropout rate, which is not something we've had in a little while, so. Is that for me? Okay. And just to round out, I'm happy, actually, I'm sure there bound to be questions on that, so I'm happy to take any questions on the restructuring piece.
Great. Any questions for Rick on the guidance restructuring update? God bless you. You said, I heard, freshmen are by that, those goals are by like when, when the counselors will see their students. I didn't hear sophomores. I assume they are in there.
Yeah, I think they've, you're right, that was not listed in here as an actual date.
You must have that. There must be a timeline for that. Right, I got you.
Yeah.
So, but the fact that you have a goal for every counselor to meet with every student, that was one of my biggest things when we did the restructuring, was that every kid should see their counselor every year, more than once, but obviously, once should be the goal. And it sounds like they have a system in place to make sure of that. And that was not necessarily in a system before.
Right. There was, there were attempts in varying programming ways they were trying to do it, but there was never a tick sheet, did you meet with your student?
And they are now going into classrooms again, because I know, like with, are they, are the counselors going in, or is it just zooming?
This year's been a little bit tougher, but they have been, when they, they have been, there's been a lot, there's been more outreach of counselors going in to the classroom.
Great.
The high school counselors physically came down to the middle school.
Right.
Again, this year.
Okay.
And visited with our eighth graders transitioning up to high school, so.
And I assume they're doing similar things with the kids who are on Zoom and all of that, right?
Yep, correct.
Any other question, any questions?
The peer-to-peer counseling, or I'm not sure that was the right name for what you.
It's not peer-to-peer counseling. The way they're, it's, it really is, is in its beginning stages, but it's a way to have students kind of be a beginning point to promote wellness in the school. So I don't see it as something where students are going to be doing counseling, because that kind of goes into a different kind of area that would.
That's what I was trying to get to clarify.
Yeah. I would see more of outreach type of things, like maybe, for example, just an easy one would be, you know, we have the crashed car for red ribbon, red ribbon week. That, you know, you build upon that and offer something else, maybe more activities during the week that would be led kind of by that student group. And also having students who kind of have their direct kind of thumb on the pulse of what's going on in the building. And be identified as someone that kids can go to, and with those students being trained, that needs to come, obviously, to an adult.
So this was a really big transition. It wasn't just a, it wasn't just a structural transition, but we had a significant transition in staff in the last three years.
Yeah, you had 100% turnover in the last two years.
100% turnover. So we've got a young department. Well, I shouldn't say that, because I don't know, I haven't met them all, so I don't know. But we have a new department. But we have a new department, relatively.
New, right.
New to our district department.
Correct.
So, and there's adjustments that are being made. But it sounds like there's a lot of energy for new programming. Am I hearing that? Like I'm hearing a lot of?
Yeah, there's absolutely a lot of, the energy level counselor to counselor is quite high in terms of participation and ideas to share. They did a, for part of the SEL, we do, we start every faculty meeting with some, a social-emotional learning agenda item, just to kind of reinforce it, that that's something that's here that we're doing and actively focusing on. And I actually should have brought it, they did a great video of lip syncing, Don't Stop Believing, the Journey Song. So it was, it was a very cool, kind of uplifting thing. So there is a lot of positive energy.
Great, great. Are there any other questions for Rick on the guidance department and the shift? And we also had within that the student services shift in a new, and that's all working out as well, I assume.
There is. And one, in terms of the areas that I didn't necessarily highlight, just in terms of student services, interaction with regular instruction, there's been a lot of, there was kind of silos before, and there's, those walls are kind of being broken down of more of a, kind of a unified approach to the whole student versus the student has this, or the student has that. That, that's all, that one vision, they're all our students. And the, in communication around that, I would say at a staff level for sure, has been increased, and we get feedback that, from that, directly from staff, that that's something that's been greatly improved as part of this process.
Do you mean the, just having the guidance counselor oversee students with student service needs? Or having, the way the student service department's functioning?
I'm more speaking specifically to having the assistant principal of student services.
Okay.
The collaboration that goes on between that assistant principal and the assistant principal of curriculum instruction. I mean, the two are really kind of partners in critical areas of the school.
Okay, great. Tom, Solon has a question. Really?
Is, I'm doing that. Is the guidance department chair an official department chair?
Yes, she is.
Yes.
So how does that map into the contract requirements for department chair, other than the stipend? Is, is there a different workload?
There is a different workload. It's quite high, actually.
No, I, well, it's supposed to be reduced.
Yeah, it was reduced. It's still high.
Okay.
It is reduced. It is reduced.
It's being handled similarly to a, one of the academic department chairs positions as well? As far as they, they get a stipend, they have added response bill?
Sure, yeah. I mean, if you look at it from that lens, yes. I guess there, that would be equitable there. It's just the two are, it's apples and oranges, so it's kind of.
Because this was a point of contention when we had that position before with the bargaining unit, and I'm wondering if we're, everything's.
Are we tiptoeing towards that again? Is that your question?
Well, whether the, whether there has been any friction or whether they have, they have taken any position on how the guidance chair position is structured, has it come up at all?
No, not, not with, not with the HEA, has not.
Okay, okay. And the second question is, when that whole situation was rearranged, we brought in a, an administrative role with official guidance authority, in part to allow for appropriate support during certain types of meetings where a, a certain administrator is required to be present. How's that working out? And going forward, do we need to continue to have someone with a principal, a principal's title in that role within the guidance department, in your opinion?
You absolutely need somebody with the ability to make principal-level decisions in that role. Obviously, you don't need to do anything. But I would highly recommend that that would continue, because of the amount of flexibility that's given. The whole building has been tremendous. Our ability to respond to a variety of situations. There's four of us, so we can, you know.
So reinstituting the guidance chair does not eliminate that need for having the principal-level administrator?
No, I would say they need it, because that, that, that school counseling guidance chair needs that person that I can have quick access to, to make, you know, real-time decisions that would formally have to be made by, you know, one of the other three.
Okay. Because as you know, it was brought up at, at the meeting, and it's been brought up before, about do we really have a need? And in the past, the board position has been, yes, that need is real. I want to just validate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Rick.
All right, thank you.
And I think at this point, we, is the fee category, the fee schedule, do we want to do that when we do the policy, KF, and the fee schedule together? Okay. Is that good with you, Rick, to do those things together?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so I think we can move on. Thank you, gentlemen. That was great. Great reporting. And it was so nice to have both of you here. It felt like the old days.
Yeah, it has been a while, hasn't it?
When things were good, except we're all masked. But that's okay. I could do everything with a mask, as long as I could do everything I want. Okay. So now we're up to discussion, fiscal year 2021 revenue and expense report. I think that might be you.
Is there something in our packet that we should be referencing?
Yeah, there is.
Yes, there was a revenue and expense report provided by Kelly and Linda.
It's FY, yeah, it's page 17.
And I just wanted to run you through that quickly. Our total expense balance right now is $1,142,700. We're projecting a shortage in revenue from our ultimate projections of $45,958 for an unreserved fund balance of $1,096,742, as of when the report was prepared. On Saturday, the voters approved the athletic trust of 50,000. They approved the maintenance trust of $115,000. They did not approve the contingency, so that will be going into the bottom line, which I'll touch base on in a minute. We have our retained fund balance, which is $188,760. So those reductions, when the report was printed, were $445,760, which would have given us a projected fund balance of $650,982. Without the contingency deduction, that means it's $750,982. And Kelly wanted me to let the board know that in our discussions, we're, we're projecting that expenses will continue to come in lower because of transportation savings, some positions that are, have been open, and we haven't been able to fill them timely. So there's those pieces. And she wanted me to make you aware of what I would call some joint suggestions that we have to look at in May, because we're, we're estimating that we could be somewhere, now we're at 750, probably $800,000 to $900,000 in a surplus. And the question for the board would be, first of all, we know we have enrollment coming. It's in Brookline right now. We're doing a study in Brookline this year. And we were, in May, will come to the board recommending that maybe we consider the same type of study, which is an enrollment, our building size, our, our energy, just really taking a good look at our buildings from the energy standpoint, as well as where do we need to be going with enrollment? A study of that nature, from what we've been able to gather in Brookline, would probably cost a co-op somewhere between $20,000 and $30,000. The other piece would be, does the board want to consider accelerating any of the maintenance pieces that we have coming up? And I'll give you some examples. We have more sections of paving to go with the high school. Would we like to get ahead on those paving projects? We have two pieces of roofing coming up in the next couple of years. We have the FY '23 tech plan, which would be about $115,000. That's coming, would be in FY '23. Do we want to pre-buy that and be done with the tech plan? At the middle school, we have a section of roof, and we also have Phase II of window replacement. And window replacement would be $80,000. It's an opportunity to look at some of these maintenance things and potentially be still able to return the $650,000 that we talked about at Saturday's meeting, while potentially getting ahead on some of our maintenance. Or the board may choose to just turn, return the entire surplus. But none of the items that I'm looking at are going away. They're concrete items, meaning that they are definitely coming down the pipeline, and we have to fund them at some point. It's just, how do we want to fund them, and when do we want to fund them? But right now, we're in the midst of a very solid fiscal year, and I want to thank Linda and Kelly for all their efforts to really monitor our budget. And I'll gladly take any questions, our comments, our thoughts about if you'd like to see something in May.
Which is the paving that needs to be done?
Well, we have a phase in the budget, which was going to take us from where we ended, Liz, to up back. And then we have a variety of choices. We could look at the teachers' lot. We could look at the back parking lot. We could look at coming all the way around the loop. So there are many sections of paving going. If I just quickly do paving, I'm probably about $400,000 over the next three or four years that we've, you know, put it into different phases.
Did you have more, Liz? Other questions?
Yeah, I mean, it's one of those that we kind of just need to, it's almost one of those, it's easier to get it done all at once. I don't know if we can get, if we're, I think we're going to be headed to higher energy prices, which usually leads to higher paving prices. I think we're still in a somewhat suppressed time. Might be the time to get it done.
Right.
Before, not that force takes in.
Yeah, I mean, Kelly will have more concrete prices in May, and we'll, we'll kind of line it up and see what the board would like to do. We just wanted to make you aware of it and see if we're heading in the right direction.
Tom?
I would, unless they're successful in reinstating the aid that was taken away relative to last year, I would prefer to have as big a number returned to the, to minimize the, the transition period and smooth, smooth that curve. And at the same time, based on what you're describing, I am still a strong advocate for taking the facilities, things that you're adding up, the half a million dollars in paving, some other elements, the roofs and all that, and propose it as a maintenance bond. That would be my, my preference. As far as the tech purchases, I would advise against buying tech right now for multiple reasons. There's a real shortage. There, the prices are being bid up very high right now due to the national chip shortage, I mean, the international chip shortage, as well as the amount that was pulled out for COVID. So this is a real tough time to be buying computers.
Krista, did you have something?
No.
Okay.
I think bringing some cost items in May, I mean, I think we need to talk about it. I, you know, as Tom just suggested, a maintenance bond. I would never suggest a bond for anything that we know is a depreciating and deteriorating item. So.
You mean like a building?
Well, things you know have a maintenance, things that you know has a maintenance cycle.
Oh, like, like a turf field?
So HVACs, paving.
Let Liz finish, Tom. Go ahead, Tom. Liz.
Roofs, HVAC, those sorts of things that we know has a life cycle. Paving, you know, falls into that. So I, I just think, and it's partly because it's the way we've done the support formula that, you know, bonds that deal with capital improvements are, have a different formula than the general operating budget. So I think that's just something we need to talk about and make sure that we're being sort of fair to both communities when we're having that discussion. We're not necessarily bundling things into bonds just because it makes it easier. And, you know, so I think I'd like to see some cost items, and so we can have some real numbers, to have a real discussion in May. And I think we should have some confidence in our budgets, by just the majority of how things passed. You know, and even, and those were not all hollows voters. So I think that Brookline understands what was going on with their tax bill last year, but yet they still came out and supported the budget this year.
Thank you, Liz. Tom? Another response? I, I'd like to see a list. I'd like, if we're going to, I'd like to, we keep, we keep circling around this, and I'd like to kind of hash it out and see where we fall on it. Because if, if it's a direction to go with the bond, then we need to go in that direction, and we need to start selling it like tomorrow. You know, I mean, we need to start putting it together and figuring it all out, and, and making sure our voters are aware, and making sure if it's not a bond and it's maintenance, then we, we need to have a plan for that. But we keep having this debate, and I think it's time to. So if we could probably maybe put that in May, I don't know if we'll have a decision made in May, but I'd like to have a decision, sort of. And I think it would be great if we let the budget committee know that we're going to talk about it in May.
I'm not sure we're having a meeting in April. I think Darlene.
I don't think they are.
Yeah, I don't think they are.
Okay, but we can communicate to the budget committee in some other way.
But we also have to keep in mind, what we were reminded of at the meeting on Saturday, is that it takes two or three times to get a bond through. So.
Right.
All of these things are going to be sitting, getting nothing done, which is kind of what's been going on for the last five years.
Right. Like if we're going to go for a bond, we need to decide when, how, and what we're going to do with the bond. And I'm not taking a position on that. I'm just saying, if we decide that we need a bond, then it takes a few years to pass. But to Liz's point, we might have to do some things before we get to a bond passing. So it's not so simple, it doesn't sound. Are we good?
Yep, so I will come back in May. I will have more of a concrete number on the facilities building evaluations, because I think that's critical with what's coming down in the next five years. We'll separate out what we think we should look at for facilities projects. And then also, we can start to have the conversation. If we are going in the bond direction, I would agree with the chair that we probably need to start making that decision in May, so that when we start talking with the budget committee, that's right there from moment go. And again, I think that falls right in line with the, the SAU board's goals of trying to do some more strategic planning. So if we can get this to where we know where we're heading and put it together in terms of the strategic plan and our co-op goals, I think it's a lot easier for the, the taxpayers to, you know, follow along. And even if they can't approve it because of the dollars, they at least understand that it was a well-thought-out and a very sequential plan. So that's what we'll bring back to you in May.
And then you have elementary and secondary, the ESR funds?
Yes, I just wanted to give the board an update on what will be known as ESR III funds. We're going to get about 2.1x the amount we got for ESR II, which was right around $60,000. So we believe that ESR III will be $120,000 to $130,000. The, ESR funds have a, a lot of latitude to be used. Our primary purpose, first and foremost, is, as we look at our data, to see if there's any learning gaps or areas of concern for us. And we would use those funds to maybe plug in either through short courses or different offerings that our teachers could offer to try to close those gaps. So that's our number one priority, is that, once we have more data, do we have learning gaps? If we have learning gaps, how do we close those gaps? The ESR funds could also be used for technology, obviously, related to COVID. So there's a potential that they could assist us with the FY '23 budget. And the other thing, when looking at the ESR funds, those are funds that have to be expanded by December of '23. So where we have the ability to carry those into '23 and December of '23, we just want to really target what we want those funds to be used for. Because right now, our budget is running very well, and to just purchase PPE or something like that, to me, isn't the best use of those funds, because we may notice something six months from now that we haven't budgeted for that those funds could be utilized for. They could be used to hire a math tutor, bring in more pairs to work with small groups of students who maybe struggle through a particular area. So I just wanted the board to be aware about approximate amount of those funds, the, when they come due, of December '23. And that our priorities are learning loss, and then kind of from there, multiple discussions with the board to try to figure out what we're going to do to move forward. And that's what I had for ESR funds.
Thank you. Are there any questions on that? Okay. So now I'm going to move to the third point of the discussions, and that's really an opportunity for all of us to sort of debrief, because we did have a nine-hour annual district meeting on Saturday, and we so appreciate all of the time and the hours that people sat there, including all of our voters who sat there. I'd like to just have an opportunity to just have everyone just kind of go. I'd like to just have an opportunity to just have everyone just kind of go round robin and just speak to what your takeaways were. I wasn't intending this to be a debate or a question, a discussion, but just really kind of hearing from all of us. Maybe someone could kind of keep track of sort of the things that pop up a lot. Because it might be a good guide for us as we're moving forward in the next year. So is there anyone who'd like to volunteer to go first in this? Because if not, I'm just going to like start over there.
I'll go first.
Oh, thanks, Cindy.
I think as far as the structure, you know, we've had this conversation before. We can't be there for an hour and a half to two hours before the first warrant happens. We discussed this back, I think, in 2018. And it was similar. It was hour, hour and a half. We have to figure out a way with the moderator to make that go away. And as far as the nine hours and the fact that we had almost 450, 500 people there that sat with us for nine hours, I think that it shows us that our community is passionate about the school system. It may be frustrating sometimes, but I think it's interesting to hear our neighbors and all the aspects of what they expect. With the contracts and, you know, with everything. And I'm actually happy that we did not table or put away any of the petition warrants. Because I think that this wasn't the year to do it, but we have them every year. It's something that we have to expect. And I think it's right for the people that bring them forward to be able to discuss them. I do wonder, in the structure again, as far as the presentation portion, they have every opportunity in the public hearings. So I feel like that some of the stuff that takes place on that day shouldn't take place on that day because of the fact that they've had every opportunity for several months to provide that information. And that, I think that goes back to some of the moderation and what's legal and what's illegal, which I have, I'm not part of that. So I'm not sure what is legal and isn't legal as far as the petition warrant presentations.
Thanks, Cindy. Great. Next? Anyone? Want to volunteer? Liz?
I get called on. I was trying to take notes.
Okay.
So I, I was surprised, I mean, I, I was surprised that we were actually able to finish in day one. So I was pleasantly surprised that we were only there until whatever, 7:30 when I pulled out. I thought that the discussion toward Article 15 was polite and mostly civil. And that I was very appreciative of. The thing that troubled me, that I would like to see us figure out a way to do better as a district on, is there seemed to be people who were more comfortable going to the podium and discussing situations that were happening with their child who, than they are bringing those things to our administrators or even to a school board, a regularly held school board meeting, sort of in real time. And I hope that people really understand that issues are easier to deal with in real time than they are in retrospect. And that we need a process and procedure in place whereby folks feel comfortable, confident, and feel that if they do come forward with an issue, that it's not going to be met with pushback or retribution. And I think that retribution or that punishment for the child, I think is what is keeping a lot of parents from coming forward. So, you know, for folks to stand at the mic, you have to be pretty upset. And I just am hoping we have some pathways to hear those discussions in a more timely fashion.
Great. Thanks. Beth?
So takeaways, besides gloss sunshine, change colors a little bit.
It's her tan line?
Yes. You know, I, something Cindy had touched on, I definitely appreciate, but in terms of the presentations, I, I agree that people have access to these ahead of time. But they're not generally accessing them ahead of time. So I think, I think it's important, it's for a couple of different, it's a lot of different reasons probably. But I would not be in favor of cutting out or minimizing the presentation day out unless we're able to get more people to access that information ahead of time. So however that is, I, you know, we can't force people to come to public areas or can't force them to watch the videos. But it, it's really important information to understand day of voting. And, and I know we were, you know, this is a year unlike any other year. But it's also hard to give presentations without the visuals, without the handouts. And, and again, it's really, it's a very small criticism, because I know it's hard, but a lot of people really need that in writing. And again, we can't force people to print it out and do that ahead of time. But if we put it in their hands when they show up, I think that makes a difference. And, and it can kind of help things move along because you're following along. I thought everything was pretty civil. I thought there was good discussion. I know there was talk at the beginning by the moderator, changing the rules or suggesting that, and that got moved down. I think that was pretty important to kind of keep things consistent. The whole end discussion, people still get, if you're in line, like, you know, Liz even said, if you're getting up to speak, it's because you're pretty passionate about something. So I was thankful of that state of saying. I think that's, and like Liz said, that's the only other note I had, just like the personalized comments. Because it felt like a very thin line sometimes to me out there. You know, when you're making comments, it can really identify a student, a staff member, like just to be careful with that. And, you know, to Liz's point, to see how we can make sure those get addressed. So that it's not in a public way like that where somebody could be identified or seen without.
I, I did talk to the moderator about that. There's no, there's nothing you can do.
No.
They, it's there.
Absolutely. If it's there, it's there. But it's just, it's like in line.
Yep, definitely.
Just to try to protect our students and our staff.
Great. Thanks. Okay, I know you weren't able to be there. Were you able to watch or not yet?
I've watched pieces. I haven't watched the whole thing, so I don't feel quite able to.
You didn't have nine hours? No, you didn't have nine hours?
I'm trying.
I don't even know, is it up?
Um, no, I was watching that day.
Oh, okay.
On and off that day. I haven't looked to see if it's up there.
Do we have the bandwidth to put it up?
No, typically our district meetings are uploaded in multiple, like part one, part two.
Part 27.
Part seven, part eight.
How about you, Krista? Can, do you have some things to?
I do.
Okay, I'm going to put the mic on your phone, on the phone.
Oh, fantastic. I really appreciated the support of the community. I mean, it was really amazing, as passionate and emotional as it was. It was great to have the community out there talking about our schools and our kids. And I appreciate it. I love the rainbow. I, it was very emotional and somewhat political, which is, that's a little bit unusual for our meetings. In the past, we've had more local politics dealing with apportionment and things like that. But we usually don't have national politics being brought into our meeting, but it, they were this year. But it was good to hear all the discussion that we heard on it. I, I know we don't need this reminder, but just because things are said on social media doesn't mean it's true. And I felt there were a lot of people who unfortunately made comments that were clearly something that was said on social media was not even remotely true. And it's sometimes difficult for us to combat that. And so that is something I would like us to continue to work on, is our communication with the community. And we've talked about it in the past and then, and then we get really busy and it, it becomes difficult. Because us working with social media is, is a little different. Because who, who does that? We've talked about that before. It has to be a personal account, so then it has to be somebody running it. And our board changes year to year. And so it becomes difficult. But I, I would like to try to figure out a way for us to be able to put out something that we can communicate with the community and, other than our website. Because I do believe our website's good, but I don't necessarily know if that's where people who aren't involved directly with the schools go to. But we can figure that out. That was kind of what I took. And I do think we have an amazing staff that has to deal with some really difficult current events that have happened in the past, or the recent past. And I would like to continue to encourage our staff to act as moderators and to try to, you know, keep their political ideologies separate from the classroom. And I know that most do, and I know it's really difficult to do it when it gets emotional. But I think it's important to help our kids understand what they're learning. And knowledge is power. I, I will continue to say that. So I really do encourage our kids to learn and to learn from each other and to learn all sides of the situation. And then the last thing I want to say is I, I definitely, we know there's a state movement to, I don't know if the word is defund public schools, but certainly work towards taking some public funds away from public schools with the voucher system. And, and I think there's a, a good minority of people in our two towns who are working towards that as well. And I would like us to work, again, towards communicating with the public. I know I'm biased on this, but I'm able to see our board and all the people that do all the work and every, and our administrators and all of our staff. And I think it's a very hardworking group of people with different perspectives and different ideas. And I appreciate that. And I'd like us to be able to show everyone that. Be able to display all of our strengths to the community. But I really did think it was a long day, but not a busy day.
Great. Thank you, Krista. I think we were taking notes on some of those things. Awesome. That leaves you, Tom, and then me.
Thank you. First and foremost, the, the lasting impression was what a long meeting that was. And in that context, echoing what others have said, I think again, we need to continue to look at how we can structure it. It's a tough situation for the moderator, but it is our meeting. And I think we need to give him some help and maybe take some of those responsibilities off their table maybe. Or, or maybe give him clear direction and support so that he feels empowered to, to perhaps add some additional structure to the meeting along that, that same path. I'm wondering how, what the impact was of being on Saturday. And I think it would be nice if we could collect some feedback from the community as to whether they liked it being Saturday. I, I certainly know we couldn't have had that meeting on a weeknight or on any night. So I'm wondering whether people will say, yeah, it was great because we could have it in one meeting. Or they'll say, no, it was horrible. If it was at night, we never would have had a nine-hour meeting. So I'd be curious to just see what, what the, what the consensus, if any, is from the public as to having had the meeting on Saturday, because that was a first time for us. I want to thank Andy publicly for him stepping up at various times to address some, some fairly emotional topics and some rather harsh statements. I thought he handled it really well. And it was a very positive thing for the district to have his, his input on that. I was a little bit surprised at the fact that there were other vocal supporters for the idea of considering K through 12 co-op. And in that context, as, as we've talked before, that would have to come out of the elementary districts. We can't suggest that, even if we wanted to, and I don't know that we want to, but we can't say, we can't pull them in. They have to want to join. But I personally would like to encourage those conversations to take place within the communities to see whether there is any level of interest or support in doing so. But at the same time, I, I think all of us here can understand what the efficiencies are and the things that would happen functionally, perhaps, more easily. And I could imagine how it could streamline things at the SAU office. But, but to, if we want, if one wanted to achieve a cost savings beyond just efficiencies, it would also mean staffing reductions, which theoretically might be possible. But I would really want to get input from, from the administration at the SAU as to whether they share that view. But walking out of it, it left me feeling like I'd like to have a conversation directly with the school boards in the, in the elementary districts to ask them whether they are supportive of even investigating it. I think that there was, there's a lack of understanding of many of the topics on the warrant. I was, I'm glad people responded that they, they heard things that were important and they changed their minds. I mean, that was actually stated by some of the people at, at the meeting. And I'm glad that they heard it. But maybe echoing what Beth said, I wish they didn't have to learn it there. So.
I'm echoing Krista with communication. Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, and, and as Krista said, there's a need, need to improve our, what I call push communications. Where we, I think we do a pretty good job of having stuff available in the public domain to be found. But we don't do so well at, at delivering it to them when they don't even know to look for it. So I, I think, rather than try and solve it here, obviously, I think that's an area. But there's a lack of understanding of policy, of curriculum. One of the things that I think is interesting is the longest and most involved discussions took place around a topic that really had no impact. But we created this, this forum for people to have this discussion that clearly was an important discussion. And there were people talking about existing concerns and experiences dealing with discrimination and problematic behavior and practices and all these things. I'm not sure who said it, but the fact that they didn't bring it to the administration is, is a, a real concern. But do we, should we be thinking about having some kind of forum outside of the, the district meeting to allow these community conversations to occur?
Do you want to moderate that?
I, I would, I would love to, actually.
Don't.
I mean, the, the, part of the problem is, I think we think we do. Because I think we think that's partly, well, part of that is what's the public input portion of the meeting is. However, by policy, that is limited to something that's on the agenda. So.
And even that, I think people just don't, don't like coming to a school board meeting. I don't know how we do it, but.
Because you're scary?
Yeah. So, so that's just something that I think maybe we can, we can consider as well as part of this overall communication strategy. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, so I wrote something up because I knew if I talked, I would talk forever. So I just wanted to do it so that it would be quick. Not quick, but whatever. So my first takeaway is, first, I just sure share some of the comments about Drew. But I, Drew, moderating is really hard. And I want to thank him and his entire team because that was an incredibly long and difficult meeting. My first real takeaway is that our two communities support the work of the school board and the Budget Committee. Everything that both committees recommended received at least 65% majority, which is huge in the world of voting. And we need to continue to keep that in mind. We need to listen to the minority and pay attention to them. But we still need to think about governing with that significant majority in mind. I do want to comment on the length of the meeting. The length is directly related, in my opinion, to the number of warrant articles and the legislative body making decisions that led to the length of the meeting. I completely support them in voting the body and voting how they want to. But I do want to remind any voters listening that all petition warrant articles have two public hearings where there is public input and a sponsor presentation. And those sponsors are given time to present at the district meeting at well, as well. So to say that tabling is shutting down debate is definitely true, just as moving the question is. But it is really okay for voters to say, I've made up my mind and I don't want to vote on this, or I want to move the question, or to just vote no. So they have choices. So if the concern of the legislative body, which is what I'm seeing on Facebook, is the length of the meeting, they have tools to address that: tabling, postponing indefinitely, moving the question earlier, changing the rules to limit speakers to one time per article, or changing the rule to have, you know, the question moved and debate right at that moment and not have speakers in line speak. All of those things are in the control of the legislative body. And the board and the budget committee have tools to try and manage the time of these meetings, too. And this year, we did put some of those into place. And we had to have people vote on them, but we asked the legislative body to vote on two articles that usually come up every year. But because of RSA and an affirmative vote, we no longer have to put them on the warrant. And that would be the athletic trust being dissolved and turned into an athletic revolving fund. And the last article that we always have, it wasn't the last this year, it was Article 910, I believe, but the accepting of federal money now that we won't have to make that warrant. Also, when we sanbernize a contract, it will not appear on the warrant until the next time it's negotiated. So that's another pro in the sanbernizing thing is that, you know, you get to decide, you vote on it, and then it stands for three years. And we also have an outstanding issue with our Articles of Agreement that have been worked on. And we decided to take that up as a special meeting as to not overload this meeting. So we, the board and the budget committee and the administration are working to make the length of the meeting more manageable by making those kinds of decisions. Another important takeaway is that we need to keep talking about discrimination. It's just that simple. We heard from folks and from parents and from folks who had heard from other folks that their kids with conservative-leaning ideas feel silenced. And we heard from former students who spoke of firsthand experiences of racism and bullying and discrimination of all sorts. We need to continue to work on this, but in what format? I think that's the broader discussion for a day when we have more time. I would say that we need to consider the definitions brought forth by the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Group as we look towards strategic planning, curriculum work, and policy work. I'm more inclined to do this work in an individual district-level committee format rather than a broad-based resolution or initiative statement. And that's a change for me because I was pretty supportive of the other. But I feel like we need to do the work the way we usually do the work, in a district-level committee format with action items, voices from the community and parents, but also staff, building-level leadership, SAU leadership board input. And of course, in the co-op, we absolutely always need to include students in those conversations. And other districts don't have to do that, but we do. And I know we've been hearing from our students regularly on this, but it would be lovely to have it for all of us to hear. So, and I agree with Tom. We need to do some long-term. I think we, as the boards, I don't know, Tom's right, it probably comes from the K through six districts. But we need to do some long-term planning surrounding this district. And I heard this from Andy with the facilities thing that he just mentioned. But it's the first time I've heard more than one person mention the idea of being a pre-K through 12 co-op. I'm not going to say I agree or disagree, but I think it starts, we might need to start to look at that. However, we still have COVID. And I do believe COVID complicates everything. And we need to keep that in mind before we put too much on our administrative, administration's plate. So all of this takes time. Nothing happens quickly. And it's not supposed to because I think in education, incremental change is the best change. And we need to give ourselves time to digest that meeting, to process it, to reflect, and to move forward. So those are my comments. I'd love to hear from anybody on the administrative team if you'd like to, if you're so moved. If you're not, it's fine, too.
Alls I'll say is, I know Saturday was long, but Saturday was much easier as an administrator than a weeknight meeting.
Was it really?
Because we're not, like, I have Sunday to recover.
Okay.
If I have a Tuesday meeting followed by a Wednesday meeting, that's taking up the entire days of four administrators. So as much as I didn't like the length, I liked the idea that we started and finished. And we had a day to recover before we came to work on Monday.
It's funny because I did have a member of the public come up to me and say that he really liked the Saturday meeting. And I said, great, thank you, but I don't know what we're doing next year. And he said the same thing. And in my mind, I thought this is working out in terms of the voters and in terms of our, you know, our message. But I thought about you guys, and I thought, would you want to give up a Saturday? Like, wouldn't you rather give up your evening? But maybe not.
No, the evening's very tough. I mean, a couple of years ago, when we ended at 2:00 a.m., you know, we're talking a four-hour turnaround.
Right.
And we're back in the building. So.
Yeah.
I just want to, I'm glad that you both brought it up. And I'm sorry I did not remember to say it initially. But when I walked, I hadn't walked around a lot on Saturdays, even though I had that many hours. I was flagged down by so many people saying, thank you for Saturday, thank you for Saturday. There were numerous people. Besides, this meeting's really long. The next most common comment was, thank you so much. We wouldn't have been here if it wasn't.
And someone brought ice cream, so that kind of cheered up.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, no, thank you for remembering to bring that up, Tom. Because I actually have a lot of comments about that.
I don't know if there's a way to poll, even through the SAU site. Because I almost feel like it's the opposite. It was the very first time that only one of us was able to attend the meeting. So, and I think there was, and as I looked through, I mean, there was a lot of families that I know that usually get both parents at the meeting, and you had one or the other. So I think that's the challenge, is it's next to impossible with it being in the spring to get, you know, two parents there for an eight-hour day.
We'll have to consider a lot of everything. Anything else on that? No. Gina?
So I have to say that I was a little bit concerned going into the meeting of, you know, what it would look like just based on the conversations that were taking place prior, too. And I was really pleased that voices were heard. People were offered the opportunity to vote when they wanted to vote. And for the most part, the conversations were respectful. And it was a long day. The weather was great. Had the weather not been great, maybe I would feel differently. But I thought it was, overall, it was a really good meeting. And clearly, we had to have that long meeting to be able to have the conversation that we had. Definitely, the ice cream was helpful. I just lost my train of thought of what I was going to say.
Do you think the dynamics would have been dramatically different had it been a Saturday indoor meeting of the same length?
I think they would have been very different, yeah. This is what I was going to say. I do think that the QR codes were really helpful. I do think we should continue that because we always hear year after year, I can't see the slides, I can't see the contents of the slides. So anybody could have seen the contents of the slide. And I wonder, in thinking about just some of the comments made earlier today, would it be helpful if contained within the slides are links to the public hearing videos? So you could go back and see additional information right there as the viewer, you know, and refer back to them. It's just a thought in terms of making information accessible.
Yeah, we definitely need to do a little bit of work on, but it's not you, the board. We have to think about how we communicate and how we want to communicate and whether we want some sort of social media or something to kind of be out there for, just for the announcements and regularly announcing, like.
I didn't want to call out this meeting, but the Rotary newsletter has reached out to me multiple times now asking for us to give them.
Like a little corner?
Everything we want to be published. I was going to wait until we're having a formal discussion, but I've got a contact.
Yeah.
And stuff for that because they're trying to fill the void from the lack of a newspaper.
Yeah, I mean, that might be a place for us to work on having like a little, you know, piece from the school board, like from the co-op school board type thing. And then we can create content and send stuff out that way. Because it is really tricky with social media because we have to own the account as like our own personal, like, you know, have a personal relationship, and then it becomes a little tricky.
Have we ever considered using something like Remind that people could opt into? And then they would get texts, and we could be texting them reminders of board meetings, reminders of public hearings, links to presentations. It would still be optional, like, we wouldn't have all the numbers, they would have to opt in. But I think as word got around, it could be really useful.
So I think maybe we need to put that on an agenda for later day, is a, just a communications.
Strategy.
Strategy session, if you will. Maybe not, we'll look at the agenda. Also, I just have to make one.
I think that could be a working session, too.
Communication strategy type thing, yeah.
People who care.
Yeah.
That could be one of those workshops that we use.
That's exactly what Tom just said. You just didn't hear him. Okay. That's great.
Krista.
Thank you.
I do want to be clear. I am not, this is not something I want to give to the administrators. This is something I'm up for to do.
Right.
Really, I just want them to feel like, when I say we need more communication, five weeks, I meant them. That was not the case. This time, I really did repeat.
Yeah, us, yeah. No, it was a good, it was nine hours. It was a good meeting. We did get, you know, a few comments on elderly being subjected to, you know, the sun. And we didn't have tents set up. And we had, you know, we tried our best to think of everything and sightlines and the moderator being able to see everyone. And we did work, not this board, but a small group of us worked to try and come up with strategies to make sure that it didn't go nine hours. But that didn't work, so we had some strategies.
It didn't go down.
It didn't go down. Well, the sun went down, so we couldn't. Bob was not there.
Unfortunately, I had a family event. I wasn't able to attend.
Unfortunately.
And Andy and Gina did fill me in on the event. My only feedback to them was, next time, we should have food trucks.
Well, I, you know, I did. I used to run Old Home Day, you know, and I used to do tents and food trucks. So I really could have made that happen with like a quick, quick thing.
Or fundraising opportunities.
Yes, absolutely. We should have had food trucks.
Dunk tank.
Did you guys have anything? Rick and Tim, any comments or no?
I mean, having sat, that was my, I think my 11th one. Well, actually, that doesn't count. Some of there was multiple meetings some years, so maybe like 14th or 15th. I never would have thought I would have given up a Saturday before. But to Andy's point, I think it makes, it was nice knowing, like, it's Saturday. We know it's going to be done in a day. It's not any different than any other commitment that we have sometimes as administrators. And having that Sunday is, at least you have a day to recover versus staying up late or whatever. I thought that was much better.
Good perspective. Thank you.
Hey, Sarah.
Yeah, I would echo the same.
You can have whatever you want. Yeah, same thing, yeah.
Rick, were you surprised by any of the public comments about problems, personal experiences that were?
Did you stay through Petition Article 15? I know you left.
I was there for the whole thing.
Yeah, were you?
Were you surprised by any of those comments? Did you hear things that you were surprised to hear from former students, from parents and stuff?
That's a tough question to answer. I don't, you know, there are some things that I can say as an administration that we were never aware of. There are some things that, in terms of student experiences, I've been hearing some similar things from students that I have met with things like racism and those types of things. So I wasn't surprised at the content necessarily.
Just along similar lines as to discussions you've had with that student group that's been assembled?
I think there was more, there was not as much of a, similar, yeah. There were some similar, but there were some differences.
I think this is a good topic for a later date. I think we need to put this on a different day. But thank you so much, everyone. I'd like to move on to deliberations.
I'm just curious, Holly, what do you want to do with this information?
So I think, I want to think about it a little bit and possibly tuck away some of these things onto an agenda item. I think we've mentioned committees. I mean, I've mentioned committees. We've mentioned multiple different things, like a committee to study K through 12, which we can't institute, but maybe being prepared with that, with the facilities thing. I think we need to talk about how we would play out, like, policy and curriculum. And we also have a strategic, we have Portrait of Cavalier meeting on Friday, next Friday. So I think we have some places, and I think I'd like to kind of come back. But I'm happy to, you know, receive emails of suggestions.
I wonder if there's a way to bring Drew into the conversation, too?
Well, I think we have three, I feel like we have three things that have come out of this. One is the meeting. Two is, I mean, we always have our regular board work, so I guess there's four things. Two is, what are we going to do with all of the information that came out during the conversation of PW-15? That. And then the other is, you know, future planning. So I think we kind of have three things.
Okay.
But I don't know exactly how to attack that because I need to think a little. That's how I operate. I like to use my brain a little bit.
When's our next SAU governing board meeting?
May?
May 13th. I think it's Thursday, 13th.
Does the discussion about pre-K or K through 12 fall outside of the boundary of what is appropriate to discuss at that type of, at our governing board meetings?
No, I think you could broach it from the topic of, this is what came up at our annual meeting. We would ask both Hollis and Brookline at their board meetings to discuss it and maybe bring feedback to the September SAU meeting. Is this a direction we, you know, that you want to head in or not?
Okay. Can you think about that when you're putting together the agenda?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to go on to deliberations. I need, we need to take an action on what the board will take regarding the administrators, administrations' recommendations for teacher nominations. I'm going to need a motion to accept the administrations' recommendations for teacher nominations as presented. That moved by Beth, seconded by Cindy. Is there any discussion on this? Probably not. Okay. So we're going to go right to a vote. Beth?
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Liz, aye.
Krista? Krista? Did we lose her?
Krista, aye. Sorry, I was confused.
That's okay. So that is moved. That's 700. Okay. We also need to see what action the board will take regarding, I assume what you're saying is that the high school graduation date will be set on June 12.
That's correct.
2021. With, I assume, because it's going to be outdoors, there will be a rain date that you guys will decide, right? We don't have a rain date here.
No, we'll announce it when we send out.
Great. Because unlike in years past, I'm just saying this for the public, there's no backup indoors. It's, the backup will be a rain date. So the public needs to be aware of that. So.
That's a very good point.
I just have a question. There's not going to be any finals, correct?
That's correct.
So I thought that with no finals, there was a desire to be teaching longer. Are we cutting short classes? If you have a class that has juniors and seniors in it and there's no finals, will juniors continue in classes and seniors have graduated?
Yes, that's the plan.
And we've done that in the past.
So I think with COVID this year, this decision's being made for no finals. It's not an official, we're never going to have finals again. It's a, this is not the year to try and do finals when you have some students learning remotely, some students learning in person in the same class. So my sense is that. So I feel like this is one of those COVID exceptions. But I'm hearing what you're saying, or as the nurse said to me the other day, I'm picking up what you're putting down, which is like my new favorite expression. Because she was like 25, and I think I sound younger if I say that. So I think we need to pay attention to that in the future.
It's either going to be content.
I hear what you're.
But seniors, or conversely.
Right. I gotcha.
But I didn't get an answer.
The answer is, will there be content?
Because that affects my support of the 12th date.
Right, I understand. Okay. Go ahead.
The intent is to teach through, teach through to the end. So whoever's in the room is to continue teaching to students for all the reasons that Board Chair.
You can say Holly. It's okay.
We want to keep teaching through. We have a number of students coming back who have not been in school for a full year. So it just, for us, it makes sense to give them as much time in the classroom with the teacher. And even better, if the numbers are lower for those juniors, given the year that we've had. Just instructionally, that fills, we can make up the most ground.
Do I infer from that that if the seniors don't get it, it's not as big a deal from your perspective?
Tom, can I just add that we do this every year? This is not a this-year exception.
But that's the same extent, though, because a portion of that gap is finals.
No, but a portion of the seniors was also finals. So for both, there's an extension for both.
Right, but.
The seniors take their finals before June 12. So content is being taught to juniors all the way through to June 12, while the seniors are taking their finals. The seniors take their finals before June 12th, so content is being taught to juniors all the way through to June 12th, while the seniors are taking their finals on June 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th.
So the classes that the seniors take their finals and the juniors don't, don't get to take them if they're a combined class?
Correct. Right, if they're a combined class, the juniors, the seniors take their finals ahead of the juniors. They take their fin, but see.
Or they took them at the same time and then the juniors kept on with an additional unit.
No, that, that was what I.
It de, it depends.
Thought happened more often.
Right.
But either way, every year for as long as I know, the juniors or sophomores, whoever's in the class that's not a senior, you learned an additional unit, an additional project, whatever the case may be.
Boy, you're lucky I didn't recognize that previously.
Okay, so, thank you for that. It may not be unanimous vote, but I'd like to make a motion.
Where's the count, what's the, the, going to be the, the end of school date?
Well, can we?
Well, I think they go together.
So what?
The 18th.
The 18th.
So 12th is a Saturday and the 18th is the following Friday?
Friday, yeah.
Can I just add one thing, because I think it's, and Tim is reminding me kindly. We also have, and Lauren and Tim have been working on providing some SEL opportunities during those, those remaining days as well, so I'm saying they're teaching straight through. It's not necessarily going to be geometry or algebra, but we're planning for a number, a, a few days of actual SEL related activities and team building and those types of things. We're bringing in an outside company to do that, so there is, I would call it learning and a really great use of time given the year that we have.
Okay. Okay, so, and we do not have to take a motion on the last day of school, that is the superintendent's purview to set that. However, you just said June 18th, for anyone who's out there listening.
That's my plan.
Because I know that some people are watching this meeting specifically to know that, okay, so.
Can I make, ask one?
Yeah, sure.
So just as a parent who had one graduate last year and then one graduate this year, one of the nice things about last year, knowing that we didn't have an inside option, was that you guys did a range of dates. And it would be great, I think, if it was possible, if we needed a rain date, to, again, to sort of do a range of dates. I think sometimes for parents, it's helpful to kind of clump it, and I think for kids too, to know that graduations now are not going to be a week later, but maybe the day later. Just makes you sense.
What I'll do is we'll, we'll do the 12th and then Rick and I will put it in his newsletter. If the rain date's the 13th or if it's the Monday night at 5 o'clock, we'll, we'll, we'll put it out so parents can plan it. It'll be the first day that we believe is going to be nice enough to get through a two hour graduation ceremony.
So, Beth, did you have a question?
I'm still going to make motions.
Oh, sure. So I need a motion to set the date of graduation for Saturday, June 12th, 2021. Okay, Beth, I need a second.
Second.
Kate. All those in favor? We need to roll.
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Liz, aye.
Krista, aye.
Great, thank you. And the June 18th date is your proposal at this point, right?
Correct.
It's not firm.
It's not firm.
So I shed it like it was firm and I don't want all those kids that are listening at home, because I know they're all watching.
You know, one of the things, the advantages that we have with the turf field and the lights, I don't know what your thoughts are, but it doesn't usually rain all day. And you, if you had graduation on the turf field, there's potentially the option of moving it later in the day if, if that would give you options to.
I think you guys have. The one complaining about the cost to recover.
I think that you guys have talked about this, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, the concern we have about the turf field is the live streaming in those pieces, which is so important to family members who can't make it up.
Especially with COVID.
So if we had to move the time, you know, we could ultimately decide that was the best thing, but then it might not be live streamed and I think really.
Why?
Because of the capabilities, like we have everything set up on the lacrosse field, that's why we had annual meeting on the lacrosse field and not the turf field.
That's not brought in just for the event?
Well, it's, yes and no, there's some connections out there that we've.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
Grown up over time to, to.
Okay.
You know.
So you've got some hard wire to the field?
Well, we have some pieces at the sound people that have been doing it. It's not necessarily hard wire, I mean, could it work? Yes, but it's a, it's actually a longer feed to go from the high school building to the turf than it is from the high school building to lacrosse.
So it's possible in the future, but it needs to be worked out and figured out.
The, the plan ultimately, in talking with Rick and eventually Tim, would be to move to a Friday night and start it at around 5:30, 6 o'clock on the turf field and the lights.
But it's a pretty big thing to take on, like, oh, we're going to have graduation in a new location, is a whole bunch of different logistics, so.
Yeah, there's no bleachers right now, right?
And there's no.
There's no bleachers.
Well, the bleachers are there, right?
The conduits for all the electrical are, are where they need to be for that kind of.
Okay, so now I need a motion to accept the superintendent's nomination of Patrick West for the position of the principal of the Hollis Brookline Middle School at a salary of?
$103,000.
$103,000. Moved by Beth.
Second.
Seconded by Kate. Is there any discussion on this or comments or? I'm happy that we're going to have a middle school principal, woo. He looks like, seems like a great guy. I'm happy with this. Great. Beth?
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Liz, aye.
Krista?
Krista, aye.
Thank you.
Quick question on that, is that a, a change to the budget?
It's a slight decrease.
And also I want to thank the committee for all their hard work on this and thank our outgoing middle school principal as well, because these are incoming.
I'll be around.
And thank our outgoing high school principal, but we're going to do that at a later date, because you're not going to, this isn't your last meeting, you'll be back.
Of course.
No, no, that wasn't a question. Okay, all right, so now we have policy KF. I did forward the board a, a kind of a response to the question of, okay, I guess we should probably put it on the floor, right? Is that what we should do first? I'm sorry, I'm, this whole Roberts rule thing, I have to find it. Okay, so I need a motion to accept for, sorry, I can't find a motion. Motion to accept for, what is it? Fourth reading?
Fourth reading and adoption.
Fourth reading and adoption, policy KF.
Is it, is what you sent out different than what's in the packet?
No, I, I sent out an email, okay, hold on, we need to make, thank you, moved by Beth, seconded by Kate. Okay, so at this point, I just want to go through it, so we'll talk about it.
There's an email on 4/12, Tom.
Yeah, there was an email, and I can't find the motion, so whatever. So it was, so yeah, I sent out an email because the main, the, the policy that's in your packet, the only thing I will say is it's marked up, like it's, it's got more markups than it normally would have. It really should just be all black, because we didn't change anything, we just added the last reading onto it and tonight's reading. We had questions from board members regarding the statement in the policy about the forum. And our attorney weighed in on that, I don't want to like, and explained that he intended to use, and I'm paraphrasing here, so he specifically used the words public forum, because indeed, we do have limited public forums that we put on, host, hold in our meetings. But the policy is allowing other people to use our facilities and we are not intending for them to create a public forum. And public forum is a legal term. Liz, you read the email, didn't you, from Jim? Yeah. So, so that is why he expressly put the language in there and your policy committee is made up of some people who love policy, but who are not attorneys. So we decided to go with the attorney's recommendation on this policy and that is why you are seeing it in here the same. Unfortunately, I didn't give you a clean copy and I apologize for that, but that is simply, that is simply my fault and I, and I'm sorry. So, is there any discussion on this or can we vote?
Yes, there's a discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Just real simply, is, is Jim's explanation consistent with your interpretation of public forum in this context?
Yes.
Thank you.
School is not, this is, allows us to restrict certain speech, because a school is not a public forum. You have limited First Amendment rights in a school because it is a limited public forum, it allows us to have some restrictions upon what students are allowed to speak, it allows us to edit the newspapers and all of that, and so if it's a public forum, like a government building, you know, the steps of the, you, you don't have the same sort of ability to limit First Amendment rights. So because it is a school and we want to keep it as a school, we do not want to create a situation where anybody could come and do anything within our building. We want to have some limitations.
So when we advertise a public forum to discuss a new middle school, are we?
We're using the wrong language.
No, but do, do we in any way suspend, does suspend this by saying that?
I, I don't think, no.
Okay.
I don't at all. It's, it's, it is the Supreme Court language in a couple of opinions dealing with.
Free speech.
First Amendment rights. I don't think calling something a public forum, which is really basically a way of saying we're having a, they're completely different things, we're having a public meeting, so.
Or a workshop or a clarification discussion, right.
I don't think it's at all a concern. So I think this language is, Jim's explanation in that email is fine, I think this language is fine.
Thank you.
I don't have a legal issue with adopting it.
Okay, so can we vote on it?
Do you have any other issue?
Can we vote on it then? Okay, let's take the vote. Beth?
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Did you, is this to adopt?
To, to, to adopt, read and adopt, yes.
Tom, aye, but I don't think it says that.
We just said it though.
Okay.
I thought it did on the agenda.
It was in the motion.
It's in the motion and, and we said it in the motion, so she can change it. Holly, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Oh, Liz, aye.
Krista?
Krista, aye.
Okay, great, I was so glad that was done.
It's in the agenda, it says 4/3.
It was on the other page.
Okay, in, to back up to this as well, part, part of policy KF, we kind of, I mentioned earlier, was to look at the fee schedule. So we did kind of, we didn't make that an agenda adjustment, but it was in the principal report and we, Andy and I talked about doing that now since it's related. It's a separate document, it does require us to vote on it since, since it's setting fees or we'd like to have a vote on it. We.
Do we have the document?
Yes, it's in, it's in the agenda packet, you have to scroll up, it's part of the principal's report.
It's under the program of studies.
It's under the program of studies, yes. So the changes that were made since the last time is we cleaned the language up where it says the building or designee reserves the right to cancel or schedule events at any time, that's exactly what it says in policy KF. If you scroll down through, we added some fees, we, we kind of made sure that all the fees were there, because we had intended them, but we didn't have them all in there. And we talked about that. We moved, Rick, I'm speaking for you, but is our, is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Because we is not, we, it's really Rick.
With a lot of feedback.
Moved all of the fee information. Additional fees include but not, not limited to, we moved them all into the same place and gave a little, additional fees may be applied at the discretion of the building principal or their designee, that was in there already, but we made sure it was like all in there. And then what we did to accommodate the concern of municipalities using the buildings with absolutely no charge on a school day, but then they come in and they need 57 different things that we are providing, we changed it to be just category A and B, which was kind of your suggestion, Tom. Just anybody who falls in category A or B will still have charges as deemed by the building principal and it doesn't really matter whether it's a school day or a non-school day, it just depends on what's going on. So it's a little bit more, gives the principal more guidance in that. And then I, was there anything else? And then we had changed the eight, number eight, to include the word vaping, because we hadn't really touched on vaping as, you're not allowed to vape either. So other than that, this is, in our opinion, ready to go. We did make sure that the fees were, you know, you have to remember that group, groups that fall into D and E, which are, you know, the more expensive groups are, E is, you know, the category E is someone who's coming in to, you know, host, to put on a concert and take all their own, you know, charge.
For profit.
Charge, a for-profit concert. And, and we also obviously decided that the locker rooms and the gymnasium would have separate fees, so we, we took off that language, if you go back to the fee schedule, and we took out the statement that, that people could negotiate higher rate at discretion of the building administration, because we didn't really think that would happen, that people would come in and say, can we pay you more? But in the, in the additional fees included but not limited to, we put additional fees may be applied. So for example, if Taylor Swift wants to put on a concert and she doesn't want to provide, you know, she wants to bring her own security and they need a place to sit, we might charge for, you know, that, we might have extra charges for Taylor Swift. And if that happens, so where to go? I'd be so happy.
Where do they park though?
What?
Where do they park?
Yeah, where would they park? So that's where we are with this document and we really are at the point now where we need to approve this, because we have, we have, it's the spring and we're not really loaning out our facilities right now because of COVID, but I'd like to put this to bed. So is there anyone who would like to make a motion? Is there any questions? Sorry.
There are questions, is the motion already made?
Oh, we haven't made the motion, I just went through all of that, so, yeah.
So you want, you want to have the questions though?
Do the questions first, I'm.
The turf field rates, how does that compare to the neighboring towns?
So we had those numbers, they're, it's very similar. The neighboring towns often charge for playoffs and stuff and, and we're not necessarily saying that, like if, if we have a playoff team, we're not going to necess, like if our teams, I, I don't really, I think they're pretty close.
Yeah, we had, we had to pay to go to other schools.
Right.
To play on their field in, in tournaments.
Right.
I was just surprised that the turf field was the same rate as all the other fields, I thought that, that there was going to be a differential.
I think we talked about that, the thing is, is that if somebody uses our baseball field, they're wearing and tearing that probably more than they are the turf field. So, I mean, I guess you can get more, it's commercially more viable, but it's not, it's not necessarily.
It's not, doesn't cost us more.
It doesn't cost us more. The other piece was.
I think part of the conversation too was that Brian having oversight over the whole district and all of the facilities and moving things around, that it would make sense to have equal across, because people might be getting moved here and there, so for different activities.
So in other words, he can relocate people and it doesn't involve a, a different.
If you need a rectangular field, there's going to be multiple places he can put you.
And that additional fees might, might apply also applies is that, in that we might need to add a supervision piece if you're up on the turf field, which, you know, let's say a custodian just to kind of worry about managing the, the turf field and, and trash or, or whatever, so there might be additional fees in that area.
But speaking to what Tim just said, brings up an interesting point, is there anything in the wording of, of this that would prevent us from writing the contract in such a way that, that we can relocate people?
No, actually, I think there's wording in this that allows us to kind of cancel and move and change as we want.
Except we can definitely cancel or reschedule.
A reschedule.
I'm, I'm just wondering.
Well, it says that we can withhold use of any facilities, grounds or field for the purpose of conducting maintenance, repair or refurbishing activity at any time.
No, but I was just thinking of whether we want to instead almost speak even more generically like rectangular field price, so that people don't, don't have.
I think we're okay with what we have here and I think, you know.
We can always revise it after we've used it a little bit and see what happens.
Yeah, I think it's time to just let this thing go and see how it works.
My feeling is that folks who are going to want to rent our turf field are going to want the turf field and they're not going to necessarily want to basically rent any available rectangular field that Hollis Brookline has and don't want to feel like when they contract for it, that they're going to get moved to, you know, the schmody field over by the fence. Unless it's spring and then they can't have it because it's the baseball field. And yeah, I kind of think, like, let's, let this play itself out for a year and then like, I'm kind of looking at Tim, because I think he'd be the one who would have to like help us realize, along with Brian, that we need to revisit some portion. But let's just, we, we haven't had a policy and we've had an issue for years, so let's try this and then we'll let's see how it looks in years' time.
Yeah, I think that's good, so I think we, what? Well, no, we have a policy and we had this fee schedule, but this is like 20 years old. So we've been living with a 20-year-old fee schedule for a very long time. So we've been living with a twenty-year-old fee schedule for a very long time, so let's.
Yeah, and I think what, how often that field term is going to be leased out is still yet to be seen. I think we want to maintain it for our towns and.
Yeah. So next May, when you come to talk to us about class sizes, talk to us about field use, too.
Okay, okay, so.
I'd rather rent it out for more money.
I know, I know, but let's just see how much it's get, how much use it's getting. We can always come back and change the prices if we feel like we.
No, I don't mean change the price, I mean, give priority to the people who are paying the most.
Okay, so Beth?
Wait, quick, one more question. And apologies if we talked about this and I missed it, but the high school track, why with group C? Is it not applicable?
Why is it not applicable in group C, but?
Being, right.
Shouldn't it be not applicable for all of those? Like, you don't rent that out, is that basically what you're saying, Rick?
That's a good question. I wouldn't see why, I mean, if we're going to rent it out, I would recommend charging for it. So I would think maybe perhaps that was a.
So do you want to just put that as three hundred?
Three hundred, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to amend that to three hundred. And so, did we make the motion?
No.
Okay, so can we make the motion to accept the amended fee schedule? That would be Beth, seconded by Cindy. And Beth?
I think, I think they left it out, because the class C isn't going to run track, which, what are they going to use the track for?
Okay, well. Class C is non-school or youth organizations, community groups, religious, cultural, fraternal, paternal, political service. Yeah, somebody could want to run a race, so they might want to use the track.
Walking.
Okay, so go ahead, Beth.
Kate, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Liz, aye.
Krista?
Krista, aye.
Okay, and then, thank you. And then the last item is a second reading, so let's make a motion for. Yeah, I'm getting there. Motion to accept the second reading of policy JL CJ concussions and head, head injuries as presented. And that's moved by Beth. Seconded, seconded by Kate. All right, so.
Just to speak to this, I, you know, a couple of things. There's one item, I know that Tom mentioned last time, that we definitely talked about in policy and changed, but it did not get reflected in here, so my apologies, but the first page under duty to report, Tom has recommended that teachers should not, if not, the word should is a little, you know, sort of weird. So we talked about using the word will, so teachers will report. That, that's the only change in there, the will. The other thing I know Tom brought up, and we talked about quite a bit at the last meeting, was talking about the concussion testing and about having access to that for parents. So, you know, basically in a nutshell, we've had impact testing for a student who's been suffering a concussion, how we share that and get that information to, you know, providing, you know, the PCP or who's ever providing care. And we did talk about that when we met in policy, but I think we felt pretty strongly that it should remain in a procedural spot, not in policy, because this kind of testing and the tools we use and evaluate will be ever-changing, and we didn't really feel that we needed to change the policy for that. But I think, you know, looking through the notes of what we spoke to, those were the two main things. So one is a word change, and the other one, at this time, I, I'm not really sure, you know, we recommend that change, but I'm not sure how you feel about that.
We did talk briefly in policy, although I don't know if we have it all cleaned up yet, because it's a lot of work, but to maybe bring procedures to this board, so that you could see the procedures as a backup to the policy. You wouldn't be approving the procedures, but you could at least have an understanding of what some of those steps are. That was one thing that we talked about.
Yeah, we've taken a peek, because I think it's really realistic to bring that next month.
Yeah, well, it would be for third reading, so we might have it as a backup to that.
Exactly.
Are there any comments on that?
So assume, are, are we going to vote on it with the word change or without the word?
With the word change. So I guess I should say with the word change.
As amended.
As amended. So the motion is to accept for second reading as amended, policy JL.
CJ.
Thank you. Okay.
Keeping up.
I couldn't remember it, it's too many letters. Beth?
Beth, some, oh, Beth.
No, you already moved it, we got it, but, right. You moved it, that's the motion, okay. Go ahead, Beth.
Kate, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Liz?
Aye, but.
Krista, aye.
We never had any discussion after she brought up the, the amended language, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we will have another reading on this next month, and if you have more comments.
Oh, I have to, and then I have to keep in mind that, okay.
So we just changed one word, should to shall.
No, it should to will, but it's a subjective sentence. I have no idea how you would want to, I don't know.
Okay.
Making that mandatory is problematic, I think.
Okay. So we'll take.
There's two levels of subjective determination there, that I, I would not necessarily want to make that mandatory on a teacher.
Okay. Would you like us to take that back to policy? And we'll change the word back, maybe, next month? We'll talk more about it.
I want to go read that whole sentence through, and it seems to be contradictory. I mean, just, there's, there's two different subjective determinations a teacher has to make to make that determination, whether they need to call the school nurse. I'm just not sure I want to make that mandatory for the teacher.
Okay, so we'll bring that back to policy, thank you. So we did get the discussion in, thank you for that.
When, when you have that discussion.
Now we have to, yes?
Well, I, I agree with Liz about the, the two conditions, but look at it both ways, whether both should be mandatory or both should be subjective.
Okay. Beth, did you hear that?
Do you follow what I'm saying, Liz?
Yeah, the, the duty to report is the most problematic, I think.
That's the one we're talking about.
So what's the se- you have a duty to report.
But then the next sentence has, has should in two places.
Okay, so we will look at that again.
The next two sentences each have should.
Okay.
Do they both change, or do they, you know?
So the policy committee will take a look at B, duty to report, shall, should, will, mandatory, what's making what mandatory, what's making what not mandatory, and we will bring it back to you on May something. Just quickly, we have HB highlights. I already touched on my big highlight, which was watching Theory of Relativity, which was great. Congratulations to all your daughters, because I think that's what we saw. They were great, fabulous. Is there anybody else?
I just want to thank all the volunteers who made the clinic possible yesterday and today, and all the teachers who assisted in coveraging, coverage, and the volunteers who showed up at the buildings to cover. We couldn't vaccinate a thousand people without the community effort that we had. And it's greatly appreciated for community members who aren't able to attend. The relief it gives staff members and community members who are vaccinated that work with the schools is truly something that we appreciate and value, and want to make sure we thank them.
Thank you, that's a great point. Thank you, Andy.
I would just say, oh, yeah, that's neat to be able to go out, you know, and see the clients, see all the volunteers and the support for that. I'll also echo the high school musical. I'll say everyone was awesome, except for my kid, because I'm really biased to that one. And looking forward to the middle school production, too. And one middle school highlight was just the egg cars. I know it's in your report, but I actually got to see some of that in action, and that was very engaging and very, the students really loved that. And then the last thing, just this week, has been very exciting, if you walk around here after school hours with spring sports.
Yeah, that's great.
Start all the games, so it's been very cool.
I'd like to say I had the opportunity to see softball and boys lacrosse last night under the lights for the first time, and baseball earlier today, and it's really exciting to see the kids back out on the field.
That's great. Terrific, and then report out from our process observer?
You're going to make me be the process observer, because I'm usually the first in the meeting runs long, but I think that we may have spent the most time discussing high school graduation as we ever have. I'm glad Tom now understands how that couple of weeks in school works. We were really running way ahead of schedule until we hit the discussion at seven forty of a district meeting, but I think that was probably a worthwhile discussion, and then our deliberations took a little longer than what it should have. But we're still out of here before nine o'clock, so, amen.
Great, and at this point, I would like to take a motion to adjourn. And seconded by Tom. Moved by Beth, seconded by Tom, it is eight fifty. I need ayes.
Beth, aye. Kate, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Cindy, aye.